Let's go. Bright like superstars, visitors are home teams, sports fans cheering loud, you can hear their souls scream. In the huddle, sports, that's the theme for the analysts, the realest in the game, all troops with no kind of picks. Super E, zone three, Ed and the Goo, yo, ready, set, break, come and lie to your plane. Let's go, in the huddle.
Welcome, in the other sport cast. Y'all already know, man, the three best, the baddest east of the Mississippi River. It's your boy, Super E. Hey, man, I just wanna shout out, uh, shout out to USA, man, men's and women's basketball team, both bringing home the gold. Uh, gotta give a shout out, man, R I P the Bobby Bow, man, the college football legend. Wait, man, I got the man, the myth, the guru.
It's your boy JD, take a page out of the baby book, y'all watch what you say and get to the money.
Watch what you say, man, the man pimp C say, I don't, I don't got nothing to get gay people, they buy my record cuz I don't bash gay people. Hell, pimp C say, man, last but not least, we got a special guest in the house today, Atlanta's own Antonio Lewis.
He fears no obstacle, he's as solid as they come, he's a force to be reckoned with, a force that wants to bring priests to his community. He creates, organized, immobilized, to help the youth make change. His mind is like a train with no brakes, it keeps going and going, creating new ideas every day. He's black excellence, he is Antonio Lewis.
I'm, I'm happy to be here and they say, uh, watch what you say, I live in Atlanta, I grew up around like every kinda person in the world, so.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable anywhere I go.
For those of you don't know, man, Antonio is running for Atlanta City Council, District Twelve, tell the people all about it.
So I'm, I'm running for City of Atlanta, District Twelve, uh, we live in the one city in the world that, uh, black folk should not feel bad about being black, right? Uh, we live in the city, but we also live in the city that twenty-nine percent of black folk are below the poverty line. When you think about it, below the poverty line, only, uh, if you got twenty-nine percent below the poverty line, only four percent make it out, so four out of one hundred. So twenty-nine percent of the black people in the city of Atlanta are below the poverty line, and you gotta be elite to get out of this black city. So I'm running for city council because I see the mistakes that the city of Atlanta has been making, and I'm coming back to fix it. And also, we want the bankroll, we want the bankroll to decide how the money spent, you show me your budget, I'll show you where you wasting money.
Do you think, uh, Atlanta has came a long way, especially for like African Americans?
I, I actually think we went backwards, uh, Atlanta is the only city in the world that had guaranteed jobs. And, uh, I got y'all on the phone, I got y'all right here, so we ain't even talked about this yet, I'm gonna bring up the guaranteed jobs, y'all tell me, y'all remember them pit jobs in the summer?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Y'all remember?
Yeah, I worked at some cap.
But do you know that was a guaranteed job? You hear, uh, Andrew Yane him talk about it, they ain't never seen it, the only city in the world that's seen it is us.
Right.
We done seen that, I'm gonna tell y'all another one, y'all remember the Atlanta mayor's next step program? Got it, two guaranteed jobs.
Got my laptop, got the jail.
Oh, you got a free laptop?
Got the laptop.
All got a free laptop.
Got the, got the little scholarship, oh five.
So back in oh five, Atlanta had free jobs with free laptops for students?
Yeah.
And what, what, what was direct, what, what, how, what did you have to do to get those laptops?
Man, look, all you had to do, man, is just, you going to college, apply, and it was like, it was damn near yours, man, all you had to do was just put one extra step in, the city was gonna meet you the rest of the way, man, damn near everybody, everybody was a part of the next step program.
And I didn't, and I was the, and I was the president of the next step program. So I understand it fully, I worked in, uh, Mayor Shirley Franklin's office that year, uh, I was able to, uh, shadow her. I understood she had a really good relationship with Kasim Reed at that time, uh, I was able to, uh, go to a dinner and I met Kasim Reed, who was my idol at the time, because of some of the work he had did at, um, at Howard University. He, he, he's actually, uh, one of the top two folks in giving money back to Howard, and it wasn't money, he gave out his pocket, put together a program that actually gave more money back to Howard University than anybody else. So those are the, uh, things we grew up with in Atlanta, you know what I'm saying?
In Atlanta.
Not, not nothing crazy, like, no, you got a guaranteed job at thirteen, that pit job, you thirteen years old.
Thirteen year old.
You get that job just because you go to Atlanta Middle School.
Right.
No other reason, you just gotta go to school.
Mm-hmm.
The second job, you just gotta graduate high school.
Right.
If you graduate high school, the city of Atlanta helped you pay and make your next step.
So I've been out of the loop a little bit, man, I apologize for that, so, a lot of these programs have been cut.
Or changed.
Or changed, oh.
Or changed, or altered to the fact that, uh, just, what, uh, see, I think about how I found the program. Uh, my mom died when I was three years old, right? Uh, she got shot twenty-seven times, when we talk about like, uh, crime in Atlanta, crime was worse back then. Uh, we, I'm a victim of the Atlanta versus Miami drug war in nineteen, late eighties, early nineties, right? And, and they killed my mom simply because she dated a guy from Miami, no other reason. They, they, they said they killed the women who housed the men, you know what I'm saying, cuz the guys moved to Mi- moved from Miami to Atlanta. They didn't have apartments, they would live with girls.
Right.
And so, uh, they, my mom got killed just for housing one of the men, so it's part of it, right?
Right.
I grew to understand, man, the man murdered my mom, I got out, uh, a year and a half ago after doing thirty years in prison, I forgave him because God forgave him. He, he served his time to, to the commitment. I, I also, so I'm that kid that didn't have a mom, uh, my dad was always in the streets, he's in prison right now, I still take care of him to this day. And the city of Atlanta raised me, you know what I'm saying, I, I, I failed, I went to college the first time, uh, I, I went to college with a full scholarship, basketball scholarship, I flunked out in the first semester, you know what I'm saying, I had a four point O G, I had three point six graduating high school. I was not prepared for a junior college, I went to a junior college.
And we, we know how that, we know how they can be firsthand.
But I went back home, I wrote a letter to Mayor Shirley Franklin, right? I still got the letter, she still has it too, I wrote a letter to her and I said, hey, look, I'm gonna sell drugs, I'm gonna go to jail, you gotta help me. And I went to her office, and that day Jesse Jackson, uh, senior, not junior, Jesse Jackson was in our office that day. She ain't stop me from talking to him, she want me to sit down with him. At the end of that meeting, she got me a scholarship to Lincoln University of Missouri, I'm, I got this shirt on now, I ended up graduating from Lincoln University as the student body president, the first student to speak on stage in thirty years, you know what I'm saying, commencement. So I knew Atlanta didn't let me fail.
Oh, yeah?
It, it was her job, she told, I went to her, I said, hey, look, I wanna go to Morehouse or Georgia State, uh, or Clark, I remember telling her that. And she was like, nah, you gotta leave my city, she said, the things you need, you ain't gonna get here, she told me that, so, yeah. Atlanta, Atlanta's have, has regressed, because I can't see myself, uh, the, the one knock on Keisha is that she hasn't been personable, right? So I, I popped up at the office that day, I just popped up with a letter in my hand, she read the letter and say, look, come sit with Jesse Jackson while I read this letter. She finished reading the letter, y'all know the street, uh, Jesse Jack, have y'all ever seen the street Jesse Hill Junior Drive?
Yeah.
Grady Memorial Hospital sits on it, she then called Jesse Hill Junior, got me a scholarship.
Wow.
But that's Atlanta, that's the Atlanta we grew up in, right? Uh, it just don't exist no more.
And speaking, speaking of, uh, right now, um, Atlanta has the nickname of GTA, Grand Theft Atlanta. What's, what's one of the biggest things you wanna see changed as far as, I guess, kinda decreasing the crime rate or, uh, trying to wrap you, wrap the crime?
Once again, the crime is not as high now as it was ten years ago.
Hmm, interesting.
So that, that's one part, but we got social media now, so we see it, we see it now, right? And we got ATL scoop, right?
Yeah, yeah.
No, they blocked me.
Oh, oh.
How many people been blocked from ATL scoop?
Oh, wow, everybody post ATL scoop.
No, but when they first created ATL scoop, it was a Black Lives Matter page.
Oh, wow.
So they, they met me in the Black Lives Matter world.
Oh, wow.
And so I'm like, hey, look, how y'all go from that to this?
Like, yeah, yeah, cuz that's the three sixty.
That's three sixty, yeah, well, you go from uplifting to tearing down, cuz everything is on the scoop.
And it is crazy, I wasn't saying nothing crazy, that's crazy, cuz you gotta think about who runs the page.
Yeah, I, I've heard.
She just blocked me.
Yeah, I, I've heard.
You know what I'm saying, she rather not deal with me, just blocked me, so, uh, but when you think about crime in Atlanta, I, I, when you think about crime, I was thinking about, I got, Kasim Reed gave me some, I told y'all again, I'm, I don't have a, a mirror pick, uh, chosen this election, but I will tell you where I got that from, he had three rules, I love those three rules, uh, not I love them, but I stand by those three rules, uh, can't kill nobody, can't rob nobody, can't carjack nobody. I added in two more, kids and women are off limits.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything else we can work, we can, we can work on, but those five things right there, non-negotiable, to me, my wife need to be able to get gas.
Yeah.
My wife needs to be able to get gas.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, gas, gas stations used to be okay, even when a drug dealer can be at the gas station, he'll pump that lady's gas, he'll open up the door, door for her, that's how it used to be.
Right, right.
Right now, she clutching her purse.
Yeah.
She scared to get out of car.
Yeah.
So Atlanta has to become better than that, when, you know what I'm saying, women and kids off limits, can't rob nobody, can't kill nobody, can't carjack nobody. Those would be my rules the moment I get elected, but I'm all for responsible policing, not aggressive policing, I don't want the red dogs.
Yeah.
I don't want the red dogs back, that's, I don't want the red dogs, but I, I understand that we can't, uh, the gas station has to be safer.
Let me switch gears a little bit, man, I'm so proud of you, how you took lead, man, last year, just watching you, man, take lead with all the, the crap that was going on in the world, Black Lives Matter, uh, with the policing, the media, just different things like that, man, like, the city needed that, like, that's what we missing in this city. You know what I'm saying, even T I said it by mistake, he said, I just can't believe, I, by mistake, you know, God, this car just led. And just to see you, man, on Cleveland Avenue and everywhere you be, man, I just wanna say thank you first of all, cuz the emotions ran so high, like, last summer, through the fall, through the winter, emotions just ran high with all the police violence and different things like that, man, just, what, what was all going through your mind during that period?
Uh, I'm locked in, but also, I was nervous the entire time, uh, not nervous about police killing me, because a lot of our police in Atlanta are black. We, we got a lot of things right in Atlanta, I think the things started changing when, uh, we got, most of our representation right now are not from Atlanta. They don't even know us.
Right.
They don't, they can't even, um, side note, they can't, when, when you grow up in Atlanta, we better than anybody else in the world.
Right.
Because we done seen, uh, growing up, you couldn't tell me what I couldn't be.
Right.
I seen black men driving Maybacks my entire life, if you on Cleveland Avenue right now, which is in that twenty-nine percent, you might see four Lamborghini trucks running up and down the street at any given time.
Any given time.
So you know you can own that, right?
Right.
No other city in the world do you see black folk driving? The first person I seen in a Mayback was Jazzy Faye, the second person I seen in a Mayback was somebody I never knew.
Right.
Both of them were black men.
Mm-hmm.
So I knew I can get a Mayback, you know what I'm saying? And so that's what Atlanta has, so if you didn't grow up in Atlanta, you ain't grew up with those kinda ambitions, you don't even know we can have it.
Right.
And so a lot of people that represent Atlanta, they ain't from our city, see, they don't even got them, they don't even know we can get that, I know I can get it.
I'm not gonna lie, man, being from Atlanta, that's, it's irritating, this crap, just seeing all these new faces, all the traffic, it's, it's like, it's old, people got shirts that say, old Atlanta, and if you from Atlanta, you really know what that mean, man, like, you really cherish those moments, you cherish everything about old Atlanta. The new Atlanta is, it's, it's new Atlanta.
And we gotta embrace it, right? I ain't even scared, cuz we the one city in the world that, you know why we got the Olympics? We said we the city too busy to hate. We literally got the Olympic, ain't nobody else in, uh, America got the Olympics, we got the Olympics because of Dr. King, uh, 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 Mayor Mayor Jackson, Mayor Andrew Young.
Yeah.
They went and talk, they say, look, Atlanta's the city too busy to hate, the white folk and the black folk working together.
Right.
I think the biggest, one of the biggest problems is, uh, in my opinion, uh, Buckhead and Cascade look alike when you get off the highway. But if you go to Calmerton Road, Cleveland Avenue, it don't look the same as Cascade and Buckhead.
Yeah.
And so that's something we gotta figure out, because every single mayor we've had lives on Cascade, so I think when they get off the highway, they see, uh, perfect, I mean, the grass is always cut.
Yeah.
There ain't no grass going through the concrete, we always hear, oh, you can't, grass don't grow in concrete, yes it do, I see it.
Yeah.
I, I can't believe that you, you can grow flowers in concrete, man, I, I see it happening.
Yeah.
I think they left us out, I think, uh, Buckhead and Cascade still talking, I think they still communicating, but I run Cleveland Avenue, I run Calmerton Road, they ain't nobody talking to me from none one of those places. I'm doing, we, we built, I, we, we raised seventeen thousand dollars, we took ten kids, uh, every, every student that works for me got, going to college. Again, a hundred percent of my kids go to college, a hundred percent, no, ain't nobody came to us, uh, Cascade, they pulled up at my office, I've had, uh, at Mero candidates pull up in my office, uh, Lee Merritt pulled up at my community center, uh, we hear a lot about folks, uh, saying they wanna, uh, what, LeBron James, he built a school, primary school, we hear a lot about folks saying they wanna do that, you don't even need a lot of money to do it, I'm doing it, I got it going, I got it going. Already, it didn't take that much money, it's me and my friends chipping in, but we live in Atlanta, the city that has a lot of money.
Yeah.
And I'm telling you, I'm running for office to take, to, to look at their budget, to tell them where they wasting their money at.
There you go.
So they can give it to the right people.
Right, the ones that need it, and you gotta be here, be from here to even understand it.
Or to even get to the people that need it, cuz you know what, they piped up and they got a little over ton loafers, and they got on, and they got on, they got on that stuff, they got it on, so you think they rich.
And, and it's funny you say that, because, uh, for those of you who watch, uh, Love and Hip Hop Atlanta, they got a whole new crew and seventy-five percent of the crew are not from Atlanta. Like, these are people that have moved in from like Hollywood and New York and, you know, but now they on Love and Hip Hop Atlanta, they representing Atlanta right now, and they not even from Atlanta.
They just watched Atlanta on Love and Hip Hop.
Yeah, yeah.
And they say, look, this is how it's supposed to go.
Yeah.
You also gotta understand that we live in the city that the most movies are shot in, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We live in a state that the more movies are shot in.
They keep building the, uh.
But you know how long that been going on?
Yeah.
Mayor Jackson brought that in nineteen seventy-four, that ain't new, it's, they been going on.
Yeah.
All this stuff been going on, the problem is that my grandma paid for the Belt Line, my grandma never went to the Belt Line, my nephews never went to the Belt Line. So we been paying for this city, we built this space, that Tyler Perry can come build his table, Tyler Perry couldn't eat at the table in California, he said it.
Yeah.
He said, I build my own.
Yeah.
Yeah. I live, I represent the district Tyler Perry represents, the high school never gotten that from him, not nothing crazy, I went to South Atlanta High School, he didn't gave us nothing.
Mm-hmm.
I went to the high school, we had something called the hangar, in Atlanta, right, the hangar we just have in South Atlanta, you know what was in the hangar? A airplane, Delta, Delta or, or the airport gave an airplane to South Atlanta, folks in South Atlanta learned how to work on aviation, we're the closest to the airport. People that, in my district, work at the airport, they work on fixing airplanes, that was an investment in the community, right? Tyler Perry, you in our community, all our kids like to be on film.
Yeah.
Come on with it.
Come on with it, you right.
But we ain't got no politician to make them tap in, I want you to tap in, next level, whatever you think tapping in, I, I mean it.
I do, I do, I do believe everything need to kinda stay in-house these days, man, there's so much talent here, and I, everybody moving here, man, and taking, uh, taking our space, I, I mean, I hate to say it, but, it taking things that, that's, you know, naturally supposed to be ours, you know?
Or changing it, changing it and making it to where we can't even get a piece of it, so like, you can come in, just make it eligible for all of us.
Yeah.
Like, we ain't mad at people for coming in, we are progressive city, we built the city for you to come here, my grandma built it for you to come here.
Yeah.
My great grand, I'm five generations in, all us, we, I, since when my folks left slavery, they came to Atlanta, all of us probably the same thing, right?
Yeah.
We don't know no other place, you know why people move to Atlanta? Our grandfathers, our grand, our forefathers built this city so they can do that, I'm okay with you coming here, but tap in, there you go.
Yeah, let me ask you this question, so, the kids with, with the, the advancement of technology, you know, we outside, we playing all kinds of stuff when we were kids, man, like, these kids, they, they'll never understand what it was like for us to be kids, but with the, with the, with the iPads and the Youtubes and, you know, just, I, I just don't see a whole lot of, you know, enriching, uh, enriching of a childhood like, like we had, you know, so.
Resources.
Yeah, resources, so, you know, we had all the camps, you know, I grew up in Carver Home, so, you know, we had Carver Home camp to go to, we had just different places, and then we had, we could play outside without a fear of anything happening, because out of, you know, the drug dealers and different things.
We had stuff going on, I, we had Wayne, Dwayne Williams murder, all that stuff happened in our lifetime, uh, I remember in middle school, uh, Brent, um, R I P Brandon Cersey, I remember middle, middle school, uh, this one area where a young kid walked past, we never saw him again, friend I had, I mean, elementary school, at Cleveland Avenue Elementary. So we've always had, uh, different dangers in our community, but we protected each other a little bit different.
Yeah, so do you, do you, what plan, I guess, should they put in place, I guess, to enrich the kids more, you know? Whether it's sports, whether it's, uh, drama, gymnastics, pool, just different, swimming, or, you know, different things like that, cuz I've noticed over the years, a lot of things been cut. You know, we can start with the after-school programs, a lot of that stuff, I know when I went to, um, when I went to Crawford Long, um, when I went to Whitehead Boys and Girls Club, they used to come get us to play tennis, and I ain't even, I started out like, I didn't really like, you know, I don't wanna do that, but it was just something to do, I got good at it, you know what I'm saying, like, a lot of kids, a lot of kids wanna be rappers, they wanna be, they wanna do whatever they see on YouTube and on TV, but it's like, if they can get that, yeah, if they can get that extra push, man, but, you know, you take funding and different stuff like that, it's just, it's disheartening, it's disheartening to see.
We got the money, it ain't no money problem. Ain't no money problems in Atlanta, we beat the recession, we ain't even feel the recession, Kasim Reed running for mayor saying y'all gonna get rich.
Yeah.
He saying, look, we was rich back then, he's literally, he's pounding his chest saying, you know you gonna get some money, cuz we the only city in the world that didn't see the recession. I bought my first fat pair of little overton loafers during the recession, nothing crazy, I did, we still spending money. So I think that the funding problems is, uh, it ain't funding problems, it's, uh.
Where, where's the funding going, allocation, you know what I'm saying?
We've, every year, uh, I've never said defund the police in my life, right? I'm, I don't even talk about reallocating funding, I just talk about refunding the, the departments that have had funds taken from them. Every year, the, the Department of Parks and Rec has to tighten their belt.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying, every year.
Yeah.
Some years, uh, police never have to tighten their belt. It's a, a lot, it's a lot of different departments that don't tighten their belts, right? For, for example, uh, if we live in, all of us, we gonna call Atlanta the black city, Wakanda, our Parks and Rec director is never, I, I haven't seen a black Parks and Rec director in a long time.
Ooh.
I just haven't seen it, and nothing crazy about it, oh, something crazy, I sent the current Parks and Rec director, uh, about six hundred emails, not just me, uh, six hundred people sent emails to him on my behalf. I reached out to him, his administrative assistant, she's called me a few times, we really good people, she can't believe he won't call me.
Wow.
You know, he doesn't feel he has to, I ain't worth it, even sent him six hundred emails.
Wow.
I ain't worth his call, though, not nothing crazy, I'm just not worth it to him.
Not even the conversation.
But imagine who I think I am and who I am in the community.
Yeah.
So when I get that, that's disrespectful to me.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
Like a slap, I fell away.
Yeah, it's the politics, it's the politics.
Yeah, he don't think he had, no, it's the, uh, do we really live in Atlanta? Thing is, is Atlanta what we say it is.
Yeah.
Right? If he doesn't feel like he has to call a community activist, I wouldn't run for office at that time, I was a community activist trying to open up a park that was, that's been closed for nine years. A park in my community that's been closed for nine years, I was trying to reopen it, and six hundred people sent emails to him, I can't get a call back, or email back, you know what I'm saying?
So you basically had a petition, you basically had a petition, I mean, see, on the email.
Wow, and I can't get a call back.
Wow.
You get what I'm saying, not, nothing, they didn't even know the park was still closed.
I mean, why, why, why would they, they don't, I mean, why, why would they? You know what I'm saying, when you get in a certain position, it's like, you just lose, you just lose your humanity a little bit, man, it's, it's, it's crazy.
You definitely do. Particularly living in Atlanta, once again, I can't remember the last time we had a, and you can be black or white in these positions, I just can't remember the last time we had a black person from Atlanta that runs it. I think right now, we might need somebody from the city to open up these parks, like, the city council had a, uh, this year pools were free to go to, last year they voted no. You know what I'm saying, I always remember, this year was free to go to, but they voted no to make the swimming pool South Bend, one dollar, uh, a one dollar swimming pool, they voted no to make it free, to make it free. All they charge is one dollar.
Somebody, somebody count some buckets.
But imagine how many times I had to save up a hundred pennies to get in there, I know the most embarrassing times I had in life whenever I had a hundred pennies, you know what I'm saying? I used to find a hundred pennies to get into the swimming pool, but.
The stuff that's supposed to be free to get in.
That my grandma already paid for, my grandma never uses it, my grandma pay the taxes, it's in my, it's in my community.
Wow, that's, that's crazy, that's crazy.
But we ain't never called them on it, we ain't never said nothing about it, cuz why, we, man, we didn't go along, get along, we gonna tighten our belt, and we gonna make it work. We ain't even complain, cuz they say you complaining too much.
Yeah.
But it's my job to fix it, uh, part of, I've dedicated my life to that, like, be whatever you need it, and I see spaces that need to be filled. Like, we can fill these spaces, and they owe us, it's, man, we tap, we, we gave you everything we got, man, we built this city, we gave everything we got. For this one.
For this one.
For this one, not the other city, this one, you know, they making it a renter-friendly city, they changed the rules, that's why, uh, companies are spending fifty thousand more than whatever a house costing in Atlanta. I'm gonna buy a house, they gonna put fifty on it, right?
That's on the start, the, 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 I don't even know if you wanna call it gentrification anymore, cuz it seem like now, it's just the normal going rate in the country, that everything is just going up. I'm like, this, this is not Atlanta, man, like, I, this is crazy.
It happened overnight in Atlanta.
It happened overnight, man.
It went from, you, you used to think you can move to South Fulton for a little bit, you save a little, not no more.
Not no more.
Not no more.
Yeah, South Fulton is so, so popular right now.
It ain't even popular, these businesses are buying, they changed the rules, every time they changed the rule, you gotta have, every, for every law they changed, you gonna have like some consequences to it. They changed the rules to where now, companies from New York, companies from all over the world can buy stuff, and they don't never have to leave that, Atlanta used to be like, hey, you can't rent your house, I got to leave that, my boy.
Right.
You got to leave or you buy.
Right.
We had a squatter rule in Atlanta, I, I talk to people all the time, got their houses, cuz they squat it there.
Yeah, I squatted them.
You couldn't, you couldn't do what these folks doing now?
Yeah, man, I, I remember that now.
So I'm just telling you that, we, we live in a city that set rules to where, uh, everybody could win, it was set up for the entire city to progress at the same time, and particularly for poor black folk to make it out of being poor black folk, social mobility was supposed to happen, um, I think a lot of folks were born on third base, they thought they hit a trouble. They saying, man, why you can't do it, and black folk, not white folk, we got some black folk in this city that were born on third base, and they thought they had a trouble.
Yeah.
But they gonna run into me, I'm gonna eat them alive, I'm gonna eat them alive, come, I got my hands in the mud right now, so I'm telling you, I, I worked for President Barack Obama, worked for Congressman Lacy Clay Jr., worked with Congressman John Lewis, signed up over six thousand people right here in the city of Atlanta on Obamacare, to get healthcare.
Okay.
Every year, I send kids to college, this year I sent ten, this year I raised seventeen thousand dollars to go on an H B C U tour, so they gonna have to see me, you know what I'm saying? I want the resources to give it away.
Real change, real change.
That's what we need, man, that's what the city need, that's what the city needs, man.
And I married an attorney, we ain't tripping about money, I made enough money, I make my own money, I, I worked for a really good company, I've been making a hundred K a year for seven, since, I, God's been good to me financially, but I have my hands still in the mud, that's my money on, on doing what we supposed to do.
Yeah.
Uh, you know what I'm saying, but the inspir- you don't gotta, Atlanta's the one city in the world, you don't gotta be a rapper or a basketball player to be successful.
Hey, for real.
We living, we live, you don't gotta be no rapper or a basketball player to do it, and we living, I hope y'all come, make us y'all mentors, you don't need them, we making it work.
We making it work, for real, uh, tell the people, man, how, how can they reach you, man, as far as, uh, your campaign, how can they, you know, how can they donate, your website, any, anything you can help?
I'm having a, so I have fundraisers throughout, but AntonioLewisATL.com, super easy, Antonio Lewis A T L, the reason why I chose it, uh, typically people say committee to elect.
Yeah.
Man, we young, man, I'm a millennial, nobody trying to get no committee to elect, no, that's me, Antonio Lewis A T L, make it super easy, you know what I mean? And that, that's what we building, we, uh, all this stuff for the city, and I'm running for city council because I understand that, uh, keep in mind, two thousand votes, uh, twenty-five hundred votes wins that election for me.
Wow.
Imagine that, these folks sitting on camera, they going, man, we got a, uh, we got some city council people elected, sitting on board right now who didn't get four hundred votes.
Wow.
They making, they making decisions based on all of us, and they ain't get four hundred votes.
Oh, wow.
You know what I'm saying, that's, that's what we living in, the mayor of Atlanta only getting twenty thousand votes? We ain't asking for nothing, I ain't saying that big, we got vote, low voter turnout in the city of Atlanta, just a super low voter turnout, cuz we, we live in a city where people, you know, we grab our boot scraps, we don't worry about that.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah, we know the population is definitely there.
So that's, so, yeah. We, we, man, we got, you know where we at?
Yeah.
Twenty thousand people vote?
Yeah.
That's less than ten percent, less than five percent.
Yeah.
Also, um, but yeah, AntonioLewisATL, uh, dot com, super easy to find, you pull up on me at thirty Cleveland Avenue, I bought this, I bought it. I tell people, I got a community center in my community, I bought my, my own community center, uh, in it, uh, every student that, that, that's a part of it, has their own business, or they getting ready to go to college. We, we had twelve students that worked with us this year, six of them got their own business, one of them, uh, he's a photographer, right? Talk about, I'm gonna talk about all of them, actually, I'm talking about three of them at least, he's a photographer and a videographer, he's done sixty jobs, bought him a camera in December of twenty twenty. Right now is, six months later, he done did sixty jobs.
Wow.
Uh, every job he getting paid a hundred dollars, at least, seventeen-year-old kid, right?
Okay.
So we gonna say, I'm talking to business, uh, I R S might be looking at that, we teaching them how to file their taxes too, by the way, we teaching them how to file their taxes too. Another kid, he, uh, make t-shirts, right? He ain't have a Heen press, how you make t-shirts, you ain't got Heen press? I bought him a Heen press.
Okay.
Right now, he got a full scholarship to y'all school, uh, uh.
Fort Valley.
Full scholar.
D, Fort Valley State University.
He down there right now, he gonna take over, uh, Jamarkis Stevens, man, y'all need to get to know him, he gonna be, he, he hell on wheels, smart one, I call him George Washington, George Washington Carver. A reason why he can do everything, I seen a kid put up a TV on concrete wall, you know what I mean, uh, just cuz he did like a YouTube search.
Yeah.
But he is a graphic designer and makes t-shirts, he's done, he probably got about twenty contracts he's done since that time, he makes most of the t-shirts we wear. Real contracts, another one be a consultant.
Right, okay.
Uh, he, he told me he wanna do what I do, imagine somebody say, I wanna be in policies like you, right? I say, well, I ain't gonna sugarcoat it, my boy, it's, it's a little bit difficult, you know what I'm saying, I, I, I kept a real one.
Yeah.
But he was, he's been such a good, I hired him as my campaign manager, he's eighteen years old, uh, he, he was the student body president at the. Uh, he, he was the student body president at the, uh, South Atlanta High School, but he also served as chair of, chair of every student in the city of Atlanta. So if you went to a student, city of Atlanta high, uh, elementary, middle or high school over the last year, he was your chairperson.
Oh, wow.
And guess who he, he met with this, uh, superintendent, uh, once a week, but he couldn't get Keisha Lance Bottoms to meet with him ever. Imagine being chair of the city of Atlanta public schools and you can't get Keisha Lance Bottoms to meet with you. Another person we couldn't get me, but meet with him. His own city council person, the person I'm running against. One time he was on the phone with her and she told him exact words, uh, yeah, you gotta call, uh, Joyce Shepherd's office. It was her. He called her cell phone, she rerouted him to her office. While, while on the phone. Cause she didn't feel she had to deal with that. But that, that's just where we live in. You know what I'm saying? That's where we live in.
City of Atlanta.
It got to do better, man.
Well, we got, we got Antonio Lewis in our, man, y'all make sure y'all get out to the poll, November second, Atlanta City Council District Twelve. Make sure y'all get them votes in, man, so we can see some real, real change.
Believe in, but everything President Barack Obama done said, that ain't from where we from though. Gotta understand, I really, I'm really from, I went to Cleveland Avenue Elementary, Crawford Long Meadows, South Atlanta High School, went to Middle Georgia College, uh, flunked out in the first semester. It was a middle, it was a, uh, junior college at the time. Had a full scholarship, I never should've. I never should've went to Middle Georgia. I graduated, uh, captain of the basketball team, president of my high school, president of the Atlanta Mayor's Next Step Program. Three point four GPA. I never should've went to junior college. You get what I'm saying? But I still went. You know what I'm saying?
I would say, cause the mo- most students go to a junior college to get their GPA up to be accepted. You live, you learn.
We gotta be where we need it.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, definitely. Yeah, cause I, I think if you had a head up, you'd have been off a lot better. You know what? Now I look at, I wish I knew a lot of stuff too. Hindsight is twenty twenty. Just, just like what I majored in, in, in school, like marketing and business. Uh, you don't need degrees for that, man. Some stuff you don't need degrees, the stuff. Doctors, teachers, it just sound good. But bro, YouTube teach you everything you need to know. The elders will teach you everything you need to know, bro. All you gotta do is ask or have somebody, man, like, I just, I just, just like now, I just, I can't wait till my daughter gets a little older so I can teach about stocks. We, we don't know what crypto gonna be by that time, so I just teach about, I just, to have her credit right coming out of high school. Just, just stuff we didn't know, cause growing up, man, I just, having those resources in the city would be great, man, for the kids too. So I, 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 I don't know, man, like, it's just special what you're trying to do.
Definitely, definitely, man. They, we, this real change that we trying to see and, you know, it, it takes one to know one. So you talking about somebody who, who's coming out of the mud and still got his hand in the mud. So yeah, November second, man, get to the poll, vote. Antonio Lewis, Atlanta City Council, District Twelve, man.
He wanna hear me talk sports.
I wore my, I wore my HBCU jersey.
Keep it rolling, man. The Falcons, Falcons done traded Julio, man.
We got the upcoming season, man. Uh, preseason starts this week, JD. What are the Falcons' expectation for this year?
See, I like to be honest. I'm a homer. I'm a Fa- I'm a Atlanta and I'm a Georgia everything. I even, I don't like UGA fans. But I, I still like George. I don't like. I don't like UGA fans, but I like Georgia everything, man. But I gotta be honest about this one thing. So we gave up Julio, man, a, a future Hall of Famer. Um, we didn't make any improvements on the defense. We, uh, we didn't sign Keanu near, uh, rightfully so, he kept being injured. Um, I mean, we, we drafted a tight end which most people in Atlanta probably would've said, you know, we needed a quarterback.
I ain't gonna say most, I'm gonna say all.
I was for Fields. I was for Fields, man. The man have talent. I don't like how, you know, they do the black quarterbacks once they get ready to go to the draft. But they look what they doing in the NFL right now. But secondly, man, uh, we got Mike Davis running back from the Panthers. I guess that's a slight.
And their brother James Davis, my partner.
I don't know if you wanna say upgrade, but go ahead.
No, upgrade. Mike Davis upgrade.
This is why I'm, I'm kinda holding back on the upgrade. Because I'm trying to see what a O-line gonna be this year. We wasted two draft picks on, on O-lineman. And I'm trying to see what, Mike Davis got skills, cause he showed it with the Panthers. Now, what kind of skills he gonna have when, you know, they in the backfield in, in a split second. They say we see some improvement. We still waiting on one of our, uh, draft pick O-lineman again to, to come back to practice. But if I had to give, give a record, man, for this year, man.
Self-team game, now, Jody.
I give us six wins.
Six and eleven?
I give us six. The thing is, um, the NFC South got one of the easiest, uh, schedules. We got one of the easiest schedules.
Now, we got Super Bowl champion in our division. We got two of them. We got, uh, Tampa Bay and we got the Saints, two, two.
Do you really count the Saints there with no Drew Brees?
I like Jameis.
I like Jameis.
Jameis character.
Jameis been beating Falcons for a long time. Okay, well, let, okay, let's, let's really talk. I'm a little bitter. I'm a little bitter, I'm a little upset. Because I feel like Matt Ryan, time is done and we should. We, we, we should've drafted a quarterback. We should've drafted a quarterback, man. I feel like, I feel like the state of Georgia did, Justin Fields wrong twice. UGA played him and now the Falcons played him and watch what he do with the ball.
Talk about other quarterbacks, but we also played Deshaun Watson twice. Go get that, go get him. He's available, go get him.
Tonyo, now, uh, uh, Debo, uh, Deion Lewis, now he, he did reconstruction his contract. Uh, the Falcons did take Cal Pits at number four, the highest a tight end has ever been taken. But what are your realistic expectations for the Falcons this year?
If you want a number, we gonna go self-team, no. I ain't never lost a game, we ain't losing. I ain't watching. So my, my part, my part with the Falcons is I think they chose Matt Ryan over Julio.
They definitely did, they definitely did. When they made that trade, they did.
I'm telling you, I would rather, uh, I would've rather seen Julio run a five foot two, run a five two. He could've stayed with me and run the five two. That's how much I'm around with him. But we made, he gave up his body.
We just watched Calvin Johnson go into the Pro Football Hall of Fame, right?
And we hear everything he said, I lo- I'm glad he left at nine years. Cause he talked about how like his body was just tearing down on him. Julio came many times. Body been tearing up, they been, Matt Ryan been running my boy through the middle. He been doing some catches he shouldn't had to do. Know what I'm saying? And I just, I wish we would've rolled with Julio. Uh, I wish we could've, I would've fell on that sword instead of Matt Ryan. Because I, I don't think, uh, a quarterback's typically the highest paid player on the team. And most of the teams around the league have went younger at quarterback, so they don't have to pay that much. And so, uh, we had an opportunity to draft an Atlanta kid multiple times now. I think Atlanta, I think the Falcons have, uh, avoided black quarterbacks since Mike, since Mike Vick. They ain't gave us a black coach or a black quarterback. Nothing crazy. They've had three different co- four different coaches. It's a black, we said we were condom. I don't think the Falcons have tried to, uh, make us happy. I don't think they tried to make the fans happy with none of the, none of the, uh, changes. So I ain't watched the Falcons since I burnt my Matt Ryan jersey. I said on the podcast.
So are you, are you bitter about the Super Bowl?
Man, I've been, I ain't mad about the Super Bowl. I'm glad we got there. You know what I'm saying? I'm happy we got there.
I'm mad.
I ain't mad about, I ain't mad, I'm mad they stopped trying. I'm mad they keep getting the money. The one thing that we see ain't working to me, in my opinion, I think he put on a quarterback. Man, he get the, he get the W, he get the big check. You gotta take the L too.
Got to. See, my thing is, I feel like Matt Ryan, he can get you, he can get you some points, but when it come to that, we need some points. When it come to that.
Kyle Shanahan got us that Super Bowl.
He got us that.
Kyle Shanahan got us there.
He used Matt Ryan deficiencies, uh, uh, yeah, he, he, he put more people on the field for Matt Ryan. And I don't know why more coaches didn't do that with him, but I guess what I learned about a lot of these offensive coordinators, they real cocky. Like you got to buy into their system and to, uh, you know, instead of this, you know, you working with them and they deficiencies, uh, or they plus. It's like, Matt Ryan is, give him two tight, when we went to Super Bowl, Matt Ryan had two tight ends. He had somebody shrieking, shrieking deep. Still had Julio and had, um, Sunu out here. So at the end of the day, you got all these people, you couldn't, you, you don't know where the ball was going.
And then that, and that was New England problem in the first half. I mean, you know, two of them touchdowns, they gave what were wide open. Like it was almost busted coverage on New England part because the offense was going so crazy.
So my, I, 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 I don't know, man. I just feel like now, since Matt Ryan stayed this year, he'll be here again next year.
I think Julio, uh, Julio Jones should've got Larry Fitzgerald treatment.
Look what they did to Roddy.
Yeah, yeah, look what they did to Roddy. One time I seen Roddy in the, my last time, uh, reading the poster by Roddy, he was in the stands watching the game, cause that's how much of a fan he is. Roddy went to Alabama State, right? He went to HBCU, right?
Yeah, he went to HBCU.
Not, not that far from where we are. And I'm telling you that Falcons probably was his favorite team. Uh, Julio Jones went to Alabama. Ain't no team in Alabama. Foley, Foley, Alabama. He went to Tennessee because that's another close place, man. We should've treated him right. Uh, if you ride around the city, you wanna talk about respect, how many rappers you see riding around Matt Ryan? Not that crazy, we been asking for stars in the city of Atlanta. We really ain't had no stars since.
Yeah, it's the culture. It's definitely the culture.
We had Mike Vick, Mike Vick, uh, look, think about this, right? The Falcons used to have blackouts in the city of Atlanta. Arthur Blank, you know it. We had blackouts, like times they couldn't play the game for us. Know what I'm saying? I used to have regular TV. So I had seventeen cha- you know, twelve channels. And we couldn't watch the Falcons. Till Mike Vick got there. The Mike Vick experience, it turned it up. We ain't got no other black, Julio was the closest we even gotten to having fun since. And Trey Young, Trey Young finna get all the support in the world. Because we can't wait to support a black athlete in Atlanta. Nothing crazy. If you gonna give us, uh, Matt Ryan, Matt Ryan gotta be a little bit, good guy, good, very good guy. I don't know, I don't know, uh, much things about him, but, uh, the fan, I, I, he hasn't ingratiated himself with me. And I'm a fan of Atlanta. Uh, the way Julio did. And it ain't hard. Uh, we loved, we loved Coach Dan, uh, Quinn. Particularly because he liked Drake. I remember him used to rap, like they made sure we knew he liked Drake, when, when, when Drake was rapping, right? Who Arthur Smith like? How'd that happen?
I don't know, man, I just.
Am I tripping when I say how that happened? I don't even remember no, I don't remember no, no interview.
But you know the politics of it. JD said all the time, you can't separate politics from sports. So you know, that's kinda how most of those situations happen.
The politics in Atlanta should be leaning the other way. The politics in Atlanta should look a little different, cause we got real, all of us are career men. I see rings on all our fingers. That mean we good men, that mean we, uh, that mean we got stability, right? We can afford some tickets to the game. We gonna all wanna go to the game. Give us something real for. Give us something, give us something we like to come talk to. Arthur Blank has the perfect city in the world. We paid for the Georgia Dome, not him.
He set it up like that too. He knew it too.
We pushed those white, we pushed those, uh, black churches out so the Georgia Dome can happen.
I believe in.
I think he can fix it. That button, man. Quit acting like that. Treat us right. Don't, don't judge Mike Vick, don't, don't, don't look at Mike Vick and think all black men are Mike Vick. And we rock with Mike Vick. Wish I was Mike Vick. Wish I was that good.
They definitely gotta remove that stigma. Uh, JD, like you said, man, Matt Ryan, he reconstructed his contract until a sign bonus. So you know, it kinda. Yeah, he got a guarantee, but the, the, the point of it is, he got a guarantee for this year and next, so you know he's gonna be here next year. And people be so mad at Tom Brady, but Tom Brady been taking pay cuts.
Matter of fact, they said the other day when Josh Allen, Josh Allen just signed a stupid, uh, two hundred something million dollar extension. They said Josh Allen already done made more money than Brady made his whole career.
I ain't mad at you for giving your money. But don't be surprised when you surprise the salary cap, you at the salary cap and then you, you wanna keep some people, but you want your, your money still. Like Aaron Rodgers still mad, he mad. He got the money, he, he wondering why they, they still trying to, um, sign his, uh, left tackle. It's, it's like when a quarterback get that money, man. That's like, fuck, that's like forty percent.
Understand, the teams that are winning. They winning, they winning when them quarterbacks young. Matt Ryan had every opportunity, he had every weapon.
Matt Ryan been there same way in two thousand eight.
And guess what? Here's the thing, we ain't never put nobody behind him. Guess who we got? Matt Shaw, he went to Pro Bowls.
Yeah, Shaw went to Houston, had a couple good years. Then he came back and backed up Matt Ryan, but he.
Pressure on Mike Vick.
Yeah, yeah, he did. But it wasn't never no pressure on Matt Ryan when he came back, so yeah.
We ain't never gave Matt Ryan no.
No pressure.
Has had, uh, what's, what's my guy named from Philly who's now in Indianapolis? Matt Ryan has had what Wentz has wanted.
Yeah, the treatment, the treatment. Yeah, cause, cause Jalen, Jalen wasn't supposed to challenge Wentz the way he did.
They had to get rid of Wentz because, because they were like, hey, any kind of pressure behind him. And I'm telling you, Matt Ryan has never had any pressure.
He hasn't, he hasn't. So I mean, I got him going seven to ten.
We got a sixteen year incumbent, uh, starter.
And we talking about seven and ten.
That's why I say, I love the Falcons.
I'm just being real, man. You, you. You lose Julio, you don't beef up the defense. I mean, it's me, it's just, you got a first year, you know, first year head coach. It's just a recipe for disaster to me.
He's a veteran quarterback.
He is a veteran quarterback, you know.
Did we say that when Aaron Rodgers got that, uh, Matt LaFleur?
Didn't you say that? Aaron Rodgers gonna be Aaron Rodgers.
Got the same kinda money.
Yeah, he do, he do. Matt Ryan has showed you, you know, where he is by now. I understand from a GM standpoint why we keep making this. Same, my thing is the Super Bowl, when I watch the Super Bowl and we up that much, I don't care what, like Shanahan called a good game to the end, I'm always think somebody got paid off. But my thing is, why not audible at the line and you this type of quarterback? You're MVP quarterback, audible. Like, I'm not calling that. No, this, this is what we running.
Those, listen, those are questions that need answers, JD. Or maybe he just need to be a robot. Maybe he just need to do what people say do everything.
I mean, that's what he do. Tom, Aaron Rodgers, Drew Brees, they'll change play at the line, cause they got the green card.
You look at them two plays in the Super Bowl where he took that sack to get him out of field goal range and then the, the, the sack fumble. You know, it, those are just plays on the quarterback, you know, that, when, when you talk about Aaron Rodgers, they not making no play, you know what I mean? We live in a city that has had, if you look at the NFL the past couple of years, we've put out, our city alone has put out a lot of black quarterbacks. A lot of quarterbacks are winning. Trevor Lawrence is not a black quarterback, he from our state. So we used to seeing a certain type of quarterback playing in high school football and college football in our state, right? So the play we get from our pro quarterback got us all scratching our head, cause we used to seeing Trevor Lawrence.
Deshaun Watson, yeah.
We used to seeing a certain thing. And we, we settling. We all feel like we settling, right? I don't think we've ever felt like, uh, the Falcons got Mike Vick. I don't think we settled. I think we went and got what we wanted.
We got what we wanted.
Well, I, I think Vic would've been a player on the board when they, when we, you know, a situation like that. We were number four, we went and got him.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You know, you try, you trade up to get, like they did with Julio, you know, they traded up to get Julio. Uh, I don't know, man, Justin Fields was in their lap. And he's trade down to get him and maximize your picks or something like that. Who negotiating?
That's the highest a tight end ever been drafted.
Hey, now, now, granted, now he has, you know, from his measurements and, you know, from his combine, those are freakish numbers.
Guess who else?
Those are freakish numbers.
What, what tight end, what's the, who's the greatest tight end in NFL history?
Uh, history probably Tony Gonzalez.
And then who, did he get drafted?
Yeah, uh, yeah.
Was it first round?
Nah, he went first round. Yeah, but not, not in the first.
Know what I'm saying? The, I can tell you the quarter, I can tell you the tight end that got drafted in number five, OJ Howard.
Oh, yeah, yeah, OJ Howard, yeah.
He was balling in college like that too.
Yeah, the measurements, man.
Measurements said, OJ Howard, woo. They got Bates and they got Gronk.
Yeah, and they got Gronk. Yeah, you right, OJ Howard is, he got, I think. Hurt last year, but, um, but still though, yeah, he ain't been, he, he ain't been a top.
They still don't need him.
He, he ain't been worthy of a top five. He, he hasn't been.
That's how I stand on that.
But I, I'll tell you what, though. I'm proud of one team here. I'm proud of them down at Atlanta Hawks. I don't want about like three, four shirts, three hats. You, man, listen, some shorts. I'm, I'm proud, I'm proud of. We so loaded. I'm like, who do you, who, we just made some nice draft picks. I'm like, who do we play?
Nasty coming on the bench. We need them off the bench.
We got some nice players.
We ain't giving nobody too much money. Even, uh, we just resigned him for a reasonable price, by the way.
Nah, nah, that's because Trey ain't made All-NBA. So they have, they have, they have, they have stipulations in their contract. That's just like Luca. Luca got the same contract as Trey, but Luca entire contract is guaranteed because he made All-NBA. So you know, Trey has the potential to make the same amount as Luca, but he has to make All-NBA, one of those All-NBA teams. In order for him to get that fifth year at, at the forty something million that it is. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, you re, you lock Trey up, resign Collins, uh, now your issue is gonna come in. You got Gallo that's gonna be a free agent next year. You got Bogey that's gonna be a free agent next year. Then you got Reddish and Hunter that you gotta start thinking about signing.
Cause we got two, three years before we gotta sign him.
Now, well, you got, you got two, two years. Two years, two years, yeah. So how you feel about, this, this is my thing. How you feel about Capella and, and Albeez? Like, do you feel like that was a little crypt tonight during the playoffs?
I mean, nah, he had a good series against Embiid. It wasn't Embiid, it was, it was Milwaukee that ran him off the floor. They ran him off the floor, they spread it. Look, look at his minutes, his minutes decrease in the finals.
I think he's a defensive player. I think he, uh, plays defense and we need him for that. I don't think, we don't need nobody that can score.
You can't play defense if a team has shooters that's lined up spaced around behind the three point line. You see what I'm saying? So that's what made, made Miller pull it.
I think we lost that series cause Trey got hurt. Greek, Greek also got hurt. Well, watch this. Who's the fir-, best player in the, uh, series? Alright, so who's the second best? Would you say Trey? You say Trey, we all say Trey, right? What would the NBA say? Who made All-Star, uh, team this year?
Middleton. Holiday.
So I'm telling you that the Hawks ain't had no All-Stars. So when our best player got hurt, they, they still had two All-Stars and a number one draft pick. Brook Lopez went number one. I don't know y'all, it went number one, man.
Yeah, he, he played like it. He played like, he played like a number one. But at the same time, it became a mismatch problem because you cannot drag Capella out there to guard a Brook Lopez.
I think he could drag, he could guard him, I think.
Lopez is sitting out here. You bring Capella out, the hole, there is no rim blocker.
I think, when I said Collins' problem to me. Collins.
Oh, Collins.
I know he play power four.
Yeah, but you never got there from Collins. He never been a shot blocker.
I think the only upgrade we could have made was that power four. I think that.
Well, I mean, you got, they got Jalen Johnson in the draft.
Trey Young need how many shots a game? Do you want him taking a lot of shots?
He got to. He, he pulls up from three, two minutes. Uh, Hunter was hurt.
Second best player. No, we had a lot of people hurt. Hunter is. Wouldn't know me when.
How, how good is Hunter? Hunter is good, but I'm not gonna say he's. I'll take Bogey and I'll take Collins before, before I take Hunter.
You're the only person that'll do that. It's the reason he went number four in the draft.
Nah, nah, Bo, Bogey was balling.
You know, it's the reason he went that high in the draft.
Yeah, yeah, cause, cause he had a good tournament. And he had a good tournament. I'm, I'm not knocking him, I'm just saying, I will take Bog, Bogdanovich as a player, I'm taking him over Hunter.
Played this, he played in the playoffs.
I ain't like him.
Bogdan was hurt too. Reddish came back too late. He balled a couple games, but for him not to have no rhythm, he didn't play since January. I think Hunter's, so Hunter's to me is our, uh, the closest we gonna get to Kawhi. I, I, I agree with that. You see him on the defensive end? I agree. He would have slowed Greek down a little bit.
No, he would have tore him up. Hunter?
He would have slowed him down. Greek probably still would have got some good numbers, but he would have missed more shots.
And Hunter would have hit some threes.
No, 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 I'm not. Yes, Hunter would have hit some threes.
I'm not putting Hunter in the same sentence as Kawhi. Kawhi has accomplished too much. Listen.
Year two.
Kawhi is a top five player, yo. Put Hunter name in the same sentence. He got a lot of growing to get, to get, to get the Kawhi shot. To get the Kawhi.
Can I tell you what I'm telling you? I'm saying a second. That man came immature. A second year Hunter is, I'll take a second year Hunter over a second year Kawhi.
Okay, but then we, we may be talking about their roles. Their roles was different.
What, what's, what's Hunter's role?
I mean, from, from what y'all giving.
Now, what's his role? What was his role?
Y'all are giving him a two or three option on the Hawks. That's what, that's what y'all are giving.
He don't need, he don't need the ball to score. He scores without the ball. He don't, he don't need the ball to score. He gets it. You gotta really watch him. Go back and watch.
I've seen Hunter, but I mean, I just ain't, I ain't seen the Hunter that y'all talking about. So I ain't seen it that y'all talking about.
I, I really wanna grab my phone. Uh, he pretty much lead them in steals. He lead them in, he like number two in points and number three in points. Hey, the Hawks gonna be here next. So where you see us next year?
The, the thing is, you know, being that deep, you know, teams don't know him to run a rotation that deep into the playoffs.
I ain't gonna run that deep.
I don't know, because I mean, you got Jalen Johnson at twenty. That was a steal.
And that's okay.
He should probably have been a lottery pick had he not opted out in the middle of the season. He, he gonna play behind Collins and you know. I don't know, man, I mean.
If we get hurt, we okay, basically. Yeah, if we get hurt, we okay.
That, that's probably the best bit, because you know, this is almost like Popovich and the USA Olympic team. He could not master rotation, cause he had so much talent.
Nate, Matt Miller is one of the best coaches we ever had.
Okay, okay, well, I mean, if they running ten, eleven players in the playoffs, I mean, they, you know, hey, man, we gonna see, but, uh. I'm, I'm gonna give him second round.
Get to choose who we want to. I think, uh, right in the, this summer, we shopped, uh, Cam Reddish a little bit. I don't think we should have.
Now, you, you have to, because like you said, you're not gonna be able to pay Reddish and Hunter in two years. You're not, you're not.
We ain't give Collins that much.
You, you gave Collins twenty-five a year.
But that ain't.
Yeah, nah, it, it, it's a steal, but at the same time, you, Trey is gonna start getting forty next year.
That's okay.
You see what I'm saying? So then you gotta think about Bogey and Gallo, both contracts are up.
We can get them up. I like Cam Reddish upside over Bogey. Yeah, I do too. I like Collins over Bogey.
I, I'm not, I'm not. I'm not gonna argue that when you say the upside, cause I like him a lot. I'm a Duke, he was, he went to Duke. I like Cam a lot.
Y'all not gonna tell me they lose. They lose them two bets and that's a different team. Paul George and Kawhi.
Can you get what Trey Young more AI than Steph Curry? Get that. Take this. I don't know if y'all know what we got.
For you, for you, can he, he like hang on Atlanta teams sometime.
Keep it real. I be keeping it real.
You don't like Trey Young?
Eastern Conference Finals, man.
To see, to see, the thi- the thing about it now is. Who won the trade? We wanting the trade now. I'm asking you. No, the trade, the trade is even.
What, what makes the trade even?
That's crazy.
Because, because Luca, Lu, Trey will, Trey will never be half the player that Luca is. Yeah, but they're two different. He won't be Dutch at height, but.
Who was the best player in the playoffs this year till he got hurt?
Hold on, in the playoffs?
Yeah.
Greek.
Before Greek got hurt, they were finna lose, man, to, to, uh.
Trey Young got hurt, man. Trey, Trey did this.
He may have been more valuable. But, but at the same time, Greek would have been a player in the playoff, period, head down.
Won MVP.
Nah, not even that. I mean, you just gotta look at his road that he took to get there. Trey not getting past Brooklyn.
Past Milwaukee.
Listen, 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 listen. Trey Young got hurt. Who this look like was gonna win that series?
Uh, it was still up in the air.
Who's the number one team in the Eastern Conference?
Uh, Philly.
Alright, so do you know Philly, uh, beats Milwaukee all the time? Dragged him, right? We were not supposed to beat them. We weren't supposed to beat the first round.
Well, the, the, the thing about it was, we knew Ph- Philly was number one in the East, but we knew Philly wasn't a real number one. We knew that.
I don't believe that.
I believe, I believe my boy. You become number one after regular season, right? So. Philadelphia is playing different teams every night, you know, there is no one team that's locking in on them. You see what I'm saying? Like, we seen Ben Simmons probably at his absolute worst in these playoffs. You see what I'm saying? He didn't play like that during the regular season.
Yeah, cause the playoffs get tight.
Exactly. They would, they was a different team in the regular season. You see what I'm saying?
What so, what did Greek look like versus bef- before, uh, Kawhi got, I meant before, uh, Kyrie got hurt?
Oh, he, he was there. He was there. None of the rest of their team was there. Nah, he was there. Greek showed up every night. Go, go look at his numbers. Now Middleton and Holiday wasn't there. Middleton and Holiday wasn't there. Lopez wasn't even there. Lopez barely played that series.
We put him, I'm telling you, we got a healthy Cam, cause Cam is, he's, these six, nine people, man.
Healthy Cam and the defender Hunter, I just think they protect Trey. The only upgrade I think.
We would have beat them, and we definitely would have beat the Suns. We definitely would have beat them. Whoever won out the East was gonna beat the Suns.
Nah, yeah, yeah, y'all Atlanta to, y'all Atlanta to the core.
We see what's going on. I'm watching too, JD.
Trey Young averaged what, thirty, forty points a game in the playoff?
Who gonna, who gonna check Trey Young? Kripal?
I mean, well.
Ain't nobody guarding Trey.
He makes Capella better. He, we, we just not gonna act like Trey is unguardable, because even with Phoenix, even with Phoenix now, they, they probably would have put Bridges on him. You know what I'm saying? Bridges long, lengthy, can, can defend, you know, and then you got Cam Johnson coming off the bench, who, who was, who was long.
You talking about the same Bridges that didn't show up?
Nah, I mean. I mean, nah, no, he showed up, he showed up defensively. Now, offensively, that's a different story.
How you showed up even when he got swept on the back end?
Yeah, he got swept, but that's, it's a team effort, JD. It ain't just on him. But if you watch him, he did his due diligence. Sometimes he gave so much on defense, he didn't have no offense. You see what I'm saying, like?
He's a defender.
Yeah, he's a defender.
Kripal flop.
We know Kripal don't play no defense. Kripal plays the passing lane, so his steals come from passes. He not on ball to film, he not gonna poke it, none of that. We know that. So you hide somebody like.
Russell Westbrook is this.
Oh, yeah, 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 red, and speaking.
Russell Westbrook is this.
And speaking of, the, the new Lakers, eh, listen.
I take Russ over Kyrie. You say who? Can I tell you why? Can I tell you why?
I take him too.
The difference, right? I think the anger in Russ, in Russ Westbrook and in LeBron, like the dislike and the, 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 don't try me in LeBron.
Yeah, when it's, when it's competition.
It's gonna be crazy.
I, I, I don't, I don't know. I like the bed the devil, because I mean, you got all these cats out here that, uh, you know, they, eh, they, listen.
Walking triple double.
It is, and it still might not be enough.
It might not be enough.
For, for Westbrook, even, even if he, if he averaged a triple double this season.
Westbrook for.
I mean, for one, for one, you need, you need the playmaking ability.
What was the Lakers missing?
Uh, probably, probably own ball, uh, well, I mean, definitely a point guard.
What else?
They probably missing, uh.
There's one main thing you missing.
Outside shooting.
No, why do we go get Schroder?
Well, I mean.
You want somebody else who can handle the ball. What does Russ doesn't need help with?
Uh, the thi- the thing about it is, what does Russ kill you with?
Nah, we ain't gotta worry about that no more. We ain't gotta worry about that. He play with, he play with, uh, KD. KD needed somebody to be somebody better. He need.
We are talking about, we, these are the year where KD, KD won his scoring championship. These are the year where KD won his MVP. Yeah, but at the same time, though, you know what I'm saying, KD was, KD was the best player on his team.
I don't know about that. That's what.
He was the best player on his team, even with Westbrook.
How many MVPs? How many MVPs KD got?
He got two. One, one. He got one MVP, four, four scoring champs.
Westbrook does have MVP.
Oh, he got the one with.
He got one? How many Harden got? He got one. All three of them got MVP.
Harden got MVP?
Yeah, all three of them got MVP. Remember the speech he said, hey, I got a six man award and MVP, you can do anything. So I'm telling you that, uh, KD played with three MVPs, defenders. I'm just keeping it true.
But at the same time, we're, we're still talking about, we're still talking about the KD. So we're not gonna do that. We're not gonna do that.
KD played with.
USA don't even win gold like KD did, yo.
LeBron could have did it too.
LeBron could have did, anybody could have did that. They ain't playing nobody.
KD talented, man, but he need a lot. He needs a lot.
Skill say, man, KD the best player on the planet, right?
I believe you. He needs, eh, he need to play with a baller. I mean, you could take the ball out of Russell Westbrook hand last, they can give it to LeBron. It really don't matter how you do that, but at the end of the day, he was missing heart. The Lakers was missing heart. When LeBron go to that bench, you got nobody. Listen, how can you stop?
It wasn't even heart, JD, it was more so talent. Them boys played with heart, they gave it all they could, JD. It's just the talent wasn't there.
I don't think Schroder gave it all. Or again, can I tell a couple on that didn't give it all they had?
I'm gonna tell you the Lakers. And watch this. What's that? We went and got a center at the end of, at the half, we parked. I ain't no drummer with just twenty-eight. He just turned twenty-eight. That he didn't get, uh, he didn't, he was, after the season, he said, hey, look, they brought, they told me something that they didn't let me do. They told me I was gonna start.
Yeah, it's coaching. It's coaching, definitely.
So he didn't start and he got upset.
Yeah, eh, eh, he, they, 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 they cut his minutes, they felt like he was a liability, you know what I mean? So that, that's what happens in, in the professional.
And guess what he did? He didn't give him any heart. He was mad. Schroder turned down the contract.
You don't think Schroder mad a little bit?
Yeah, I, I think he mad a little bit, but you still have to look at the talent level, like when LeBron come out the game, you know, okay, so the way they played, AD played the whole first quarter. The whole twelve minutes, AD played the whole twelve minutes. They would brain Bron out, probably around eight minutes more, let him get a rest, let him start the second quarter. So you know, when Bron was out the game, you know, if AD was hurt or AD went in the game, look who you relying on to score. You got. Harrell even fell out of rotation. He was mad. But I'm saying, you got the Morris brother, who is, he's not even the best Morris brother.
He played with more heart than the rest of them.
The talent level.
You know why I don't believe that? Most, most of LeBron career, his teammates look at him, like they, it's like you instantly get bad when you play with LeBron, because. Just dish it to him, just dish it. And it's like your skills diminish when you play with LeBron or something. Westbrook ain't having it. You can't diminish Westbrook's skills. You can't diminish his heart. That man, that man standing toe to toe with LeBron. He don't look at LeBron. Kevin Lowry averaging double doubles before he got with him. Bosch was better before he got, got with him. Sometimes you could say AD was better before he got with LeBron.
AD's playing at his maximum level. We've seen AD at his best, which is why it took so much to get AD. See what I'm saying? So we've seen a better version of AD.
Just as much to get, we ain't sent just as much.
Nah, you didn't send half of what's it, what for AD.
Yeah, you can't say.
You gotta think about heart, ball, uh, Ingram, and then they gave up first round picks for like three or four years, like, you see what I'm saying? So, you know what I mean?
We got Westbrook in the one.
They got Westbrook for, for pennies and that's just cause Washington didn't wanna lose him for nothing. So you know, you have to understand.
It wasn't even just all business with that.
Yeah, eh, eh, but yeah, I say it's probably seventy-third to be in it, because you, you don't, you don't wanna lose Westbrook for nothing. You see what I'm saying? So at the same time, you get some. So, at the same time, you get some younger players who, they're hoping that Bill wants to stay. I don't think Bill is gonna wanna stay.
I think he stays.
They, they, they brought, I mean, they brought in Dan Woody, but you know, I, I still don't think Bill is gonna wanna stay once this team gets the going and they start out the season at the bottom, midway through the season, I think he'll, he'll start.
You can wrap it up for the next two years. Lakers gonna win two straight.
I ain't, ain't gonna say all that because you.
I like that.
You talking about D. Casilla.
They can prepare for like the third year.
D. Casilla are like two years away from, from nursing home. And then, you know, you, when you think about the other teams, Brooklyn adding Patty Mills was uh, listen, that might've been the best free agent move this offseason.
So we're gonna sit here.
Man.
We gonna sit here.
Kyrie gonna get on the ball.
So you really sat here and waste all time talking about some Patty Mills.
Listen, bro, Patty Mills just put up forty-three points in, in, in the, in the Bruins medal game.
Patty Mills, man.
Put up forty-three.
You know who owns the uh, you know who owns the scoring record for uh Olympic basketball?
Who that?
Luca. This guy this year.
Eh, that's what I'm saying, like.
Michael Jordan?
Nah, listen, I'm not.
Is he better than LeBron?
I'm not putting nobody above uh, of Jordan.
So I'm saying is that I ain't going for that. You tell me Patty Mills go forty-three.
Listen, nah.
I seen Luis, Luis Scola go like thirty.
Yeah, yeah, but at the same time, Patty Mills is consistent. That's what, that's what.
Well, that's what.
Am I saying the right name? Luis Scola?
Yeah, Luis Scola, yeah, yeah.
I remember him. Played for Houston.
Yeah, Kobe.
He played for the Hawks too.
Yeah, yeah, Kobe used to talk trash to him, yeah, when they played in the West. Yeah, like.
You know what kind of numbers he put up in the Olympics?
Yeah, I mean, of, of course, he was the best player on the team, but at the same time, we're talking about Patty Mills who has done this year after year for the Spurs. Every time he fill in for a inju- the John T. Murray or, you know what I'm saying? Tony Parker, I mean, the, the Patty, Patty Mills been there.
I have no comment talking about Patty Mills.
Okay, alright.
I have no comment.
Patty Mills was, was a great.
So we just talked about age, right?
Mm-hmm.
How old is Patty Mills?
Uh, I think he just.
Old as hell.
Nah, he ain't that old.
Can I say he been around for a while?
He been around for a while, but I, I don't even think he's like thirty-three, JD.
Gotta be thirty-three.
But how is LeBron?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
I, I hope he about thirty-four, thirty-five.
Nah, 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 Bron, yeah, Bron came out of high school old three. Yeah, 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 so we talking.
And then, and then you talking about everybody, the Lakers have the oldest team in NBA history. In NBA history, they have the oldest team in NBA history.
They got more talent. They got more talent than.
Only people that can beat the Lakers is if my, is if Cam Radish and.
Nah.
My boy, uh.
That would be a dream finals for me to.
I can see the Hawks beating.
Guess why?
I, I.
Guess why?
I see Hunter putting handcuffs on KD.
Ooh.
I see, I see Cam Radish.
They can lose.
I see Cam Radish.
Wait, wait, no. Handcuffs on KD.
Nobody in the league put handcuffs.
Hunter.
Nobody in the league is putting handcuffs on KD.
I gotta do a touch KD a little bit.
And, 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 that, what's going up? That, listen, this is a foul every time you touch KD.
You're not, you're not in the playoffs.
Yes, it is in the playoffs.
You must've just seen what, why PJ Tucker couldn't stay in the game? Cuz he would get five fouls in three quarters.
Aggressive. He a little too aggressive. He's aggressive.
He's there for the files. He's always been filing for.
Well.
He came to.
Well, okay, so there, there's a team in Miami that has put together a pretty, pretty good team.
They not gonna beat the Hawks.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, my, that, oh.
They can't score no points.
They added Kyle Lowry. You added PJ Tucker.
Okay.
What? They can't score no points.
You just talked about PJ.
Uh, exactly.
Can I tell you something?
Alright, so do we, so Hunter averages about seventeen points a game. Is that a good for a defender?
I mean, it's, it's good for any player.
For a second year defender.
It's good for any player. It's good for any player, but what, what, what we're gonna have to look at is, we're gonna have to look at his efficiency. He's averaging seventeen. He's averaging seventeen on how many shots? You know what I'm saying? So.
The less.
He's, he's super efficient, the less. We'll draw plays for him.